All right, it is 6:30. Welcome to the Inglewood Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for March 4th, 2025. I'm calling us to order. Can we de-roll, please?
Mr. Hagerty?
Here.
Ms. Austin?
Here, present.
Uh, Mr. Montiel is absent, and let's see. Mr. Ruttle?
Here.
I can't hear you.
Here.
Sorry. I mean, I can hear, I can see you saying here, and I can see you, so I'm gonna mark you.
This is San Francisco.
What's that?
This is San Francisco.
Yeah, I know. Mr. Adams?
Here.
Ms. Hubka?
Here.
Mr. Renson?
Here.
Uh, I don't see Mr. Kaplan, uh, Ms. Cesari, Cesero?
Here.
And Chair Martinez. Oh, no.
Here. Oh, we've got Mr. Kaplan joining right now.
Or Ms. Present. Hold on, we'll get Mr. Kaplan on the record here in a minute.
Right. We have, uh, we need him to say that he's here, which is attendance.
Present.
Thank you. Just so we have you on the record.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, um, first order is Order of Business Approval of Minutes. Thank you. Approval of Minutes, uh, from the February 19th meeting.
I'll make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
I'll move to approve.
Seconded.
We have any discussion about the minutes, any corrections, anything that, that, nope. Okay, we take a vote?
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Abstain.
Steven? Yep, I see ya. Mr. Adams?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Marti, or Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
And motion passes.
All right, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is public forum. Um, this is, uh, an opportunity for the public to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you are here to speak for, um, uh, the, um, the public hearing later for the PUD, then that will be your time. But right now is an opportunity for any public to speak on things not on the agenda. Then would anybody like to speak? Anybody online?
Uh, I have a guest with P-F-R-I-S-I-N-A. Did you wish to speak during the public forum?
No, I'm fine. I'm just listening.
Yeah, we're not hearing things out here that are coming in online.
I'm not, I'm not hearing anything.
Okay, so nobody, nobody online wants to speak in the public forum? Great. Um, let's move on then to the South Broadway Design Guidelines. Hillary Portell.
Chair, uh, before she gets started, I, I just wanted to update all of you. In your staff report, it says that you would be, that Hillary and Chaney are requesting a recommendation for the design standards. Uh, that's actually not gonna happen tonight. What they're doing is just giving a study session um, to get any input that you all have on the design standards. The ordinance that would go to council for these, uh, doesn't require, uh, a recommendation from the commission.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Hillary Portell, and I'm the Executive Director of the Inglewood Downtown Development Authority. Thank you for the opportunity to, uh, share with you one of our highest priority projects right now for the downtown district. Um, South Broadway is a special place. This, it's this community's original downtown. It's lined by its oldest buildings, landmarks, local businesses, and memories. Throughout the downtown planning efforts starting in 2019 to today, uh, people tell us repeatedly that they love their main street. They like the walkability, the storefronts, uh, the funky vibe. Uh, they see development to the north, and they tell us, we don't want to be Denverized. We want us, we want to be Inglewood. Um, and others are discovering our main street. Ten new businesses moved into the South Broadway area in the last seven months of last year alone. There are four major building renovations on South Broadway in the 3,400 and 3,300 blocks alone. We want these new customers, businesses, and investment, but we don't want to ruin our main street. So in late 2023, we launched the South Broadway Public Realm Action Plan, uh, which is designed to make our main street more welcoming, safe, and easier for everyone to get around. We'd like it to be a 360-degree main street with things happening around every corner. It needs to be authentically ours, um, with a distinct sense of place where local businesses can thrive for many years to come. Tonight, we'll give you, uh, an overview of the larger project, which is the South Broadway Public Realm Action Plan. The extensive community engagement, um, we've had along the way, um, that has resulted in, um, nine letters of support for the Design Guidelines package, um, from groups we've gotten to know and trust. Um, I feel, I, I hope we've earned their trust. Um, they see their, uh, input in the work product, and, um, I hold that trust in, uh, high esteem, uh, and feel very accountable back to them. We will, uh, present some quick info on two pilot projects, um, and also 30% streetscape designs for the South Broadway area, and then we'll zone in on the design guidelines that, uh, we're advancing, um, to City Council later this month, hopefully with your, um, support, and, um, take any questions at that time. So, again, overall, we want to do what other, uh, communities like ours have done, and it's taken them 30 years. So we're just getting going here, but we're ahead of the curve. Um, all, all the favorite downtown areas in Colorado, whether it's Golden, Arvada, Boulder, uh, Littleton, Lafayette, Fort Collins, they all have design guidelines. It's expected now, um, for, um, businesses, uh, developers, whether they're small scale or large scale, if they want to be in these desirable locations, they expect to have some standards, and they want those because they want their investment to be protected as well. The, um, design guidelines in the South Broadway Public Realm Action Plan are in alignment with the Inglewood Comprehensive Plan, which calls for things like, uh, downtown streetscape improvements, enhancing Broadway as a neighborhood amenity, uh, activating alleys, and attracting neighborhoods serving retail along Broadway. If you create a physical environment that, that people feel safe and comfortable and happy in, small businesses that serve lo, the local community will want to be in that environment. The project is in alignment with the Inglewood Downtown Plan, which specifically calls for enhancing the streetscape along South Broadway in a way that, that supports local identity, enhancing lighting, um, creating, uh, gateways, unifying elements in streetscape design, public art. And finally, um, the design guidelines themselves are in, in alignment with the Inglewood Downtown Plan, which again talks about leveraging and strengthening Broadway's authentic feel, um, encouraging compact redevelopment models that promote walkability. Um, the, the downtown plan explicitly, uh, talks about urban design guidelines as a tool, um, and, uh, establishing lower building heights along South Broadway to maintain the south, uh, the small-town character. There's a real need for this project, um, and, and, you know, this community is, is, is really unique, and it is, it, it has informed a, um, universal design as a guiding principle in how our team has gone about this, the, um, streetscape design. Within one mile of the 3,400 block of South Broadway, uh, 62% of households are under $75,000, $75,000 in household income. 14% of the residents have no vehicle. 13% of the city's population is living with a disability, with another 200 to 300 patients per year, uh, living in our community and, um, receiving rehabilitation services at Craig Hospital. I'm gonna, uh, turn this over now to Chaney Bostic of Studio Seed, who is the lead urban designer on the project.
Hillary, um, so I'll give you a general overview of the project, and then we'll, as Hillary said, go into a little bit more detail on the design guidelines. So this was our engagement process. We started in October of '23, so this was a little over a year. Um, as Hillary mentioned, during that year, a lot has been happening, so the timing is right. Um, we had a project advisory group that we met with, um, four times over that process. Uh, we consistently met with the EDDA Board, uh, four different times. We had, um, three different touchpoints with the broader community. Um, we had a staff, uh, technical advisory committee with city staff that we met with, and then, um, we've briefed City Council once in Au, in August, and then we're talking with you, and then we're going to City Council after this. Um, just a little snippet of, um, when we started the project, one of our broad community outreach goals, um, was a, uh, uh, online survey to reach as many people as we possibly could, and we had, um, we had flyers all over South Broadway. We, um, put it out on the, um, so, on the EDDA newsletter to get the word out. We had 631 respondents, which is really great for the size of community. So we felt great about that. And just, uh, in general, some things, uh, unique, uh, unique identity was one thing that came out of that. People really think that Inglewood has a uni, a unique identity, but what we heard more, um, generally was that people don't want to lose that unique identity. Um, lighting safety was really important. People wanted to feel more safe, um, and lighting was a big part of that. Um, more space for dining, trees, public art, really beautification, um, principles. And we had a visual preference survey, so the, this speaks to the design guidelines, um, which we wrote to the architecture and dining. Um, in terms of architecture, uh, hi, highly, uh, voted upon were saving old buildings, repurposing them, um, but also a mix of new and old was also, um, a top vote getter. And then, um, more traditional, uh, uh, dining along the street with, um, adjacent to the buildings with like the flowers and along, um, with the fencing, enclosing, the dining was a popular, um, choice for outdoor dining. Here are just some pictures of our engagement process, some of the, uh, meeting, meetings we had along the way. On the right was, uh, the Inglewood Block Party, which was really fun. We activated the alley. Another part of this project was pilot projects. Um, so Hillary wanted to, and the DDA wanted to, uh, demonstrate what some of the, these ideas could do, you know, not just create a plan, um, but really do it. So, um, the first thing we did was called Flower Pop Alley, and maybe some of you went to it. We, uh, as I said, some of those pictures were from Inglewood Block Party. We had three different artists, um, do murals and what we call yarn bombing, and that was highly successful. Um, the murals are still up, and we, um, engaged and activated and, and actually talked to people about the plan during the Inglewood Block Party. Um, and the second pilot project is the West Hampton Festival Street, which we are, uh, currently working on, and this will be, um, the idea here is to, along West Hampton, um, so west of South Broadway, where East Hampton is really more of a, um, a collector. West Hampton, uh, really functions more as a local street because it dead-ends and turns into a coma. So, uh, the concept here is to squeeze the street down, um, with measures like using, um, just paint and bollards and some planters. Um, we also want to put a safer crosswalk, um, at the end going into Dry Creek Plaza. Um, the, uh, the whole idea here is really to start to activate that street, activate the plaza, get people to feel safer, and demonstrate the potential of this street. In terms of the streetscape, we, so 30% streetscape design for South Broadway, um, just quickly to go through, uh, you know, we don't have a whole lot of space to work with. We're not changing the street, uh, of South Broadway drastically, but we do point out that we want an accessible route very clearly. Um, this was, uh, universal design was very important. So just a street section and kind of an example picture showing, um, what South Broadway could look like in the future. And then, um, allowing for cafe seating, and, and then that accessible route could move around the cafe seating, um, in those locations between trees. And we came up with, um, the idea, uh, the saying "traditional with a twist." It really is that, you know, the traditional main street, but also this flair of like color and, um, have uni, unique identity, and Inglewood being, um, kind of more, uh, hip, grungy, you know, kind of colorful. So, uh, we'll be working on that palette as we go, but expect some color. And this is just a rendering showing, um, from the mid-bloc crossing at the 3,400 block, so this is existing today, and then, um, showing what that could look like in the future. So you see more plantings, um, some seat walls, more opportunity to seat, sit and gather, um, planters, public art, uh, signage, uh, more space in general given to the pedestrians and safer crosswalks. Um, so that is just one view, more trees. Um, and now we'll talk about the design guidelines. I'm gonna hand it back to Hillary.
Okay, so, um, as I mentioned earlier, our peer communities have design guidelines for their downtown areas. Um, we've learned some from them, but, um, our, our recommendations here are very informed by, uh, people who are living, working, visiting, um, and running a business on South Broadway. Um, what, what's the difference between zoning and south, uh, and design guidelines? This is a really important point. Um, currently, um, there is zoning in place on South Broadway, and, um, you know, zoning standards are absolute and measurable. You must do this. Um, and they cover things like maximum building heights, transparency of windows, the amount of open space that's required. Design guidelines are more detailed and aspirational, and talk about, um, historic patterns, appropriate design details, elements, materials, uh, things we'd like to bring back, um, i, onto the street, um, how the window placement should line up, how, um, awnings should be placed. It gets down to, um, things that give the streetscape more character. Okay? So the purpose of the, of the design guidelines is to convey the community's vision of our main street as supported in the comp plan and the downtown plan, uh, to support and enhance the unique main street identity while accommodating new investment. Um, it's intended to be a tool to guide best practices, um, not a barrier to new investment. These are, um, pretty streamlined set of guidelines. They're not onerous or too, too, um, expensive for anybody to comply with. Um, but it does raise the standard just a little bit. If you wanna, if you want to do something new on our main street, this is our vision, and we want you to be part of that and help us build it out. So the document is short and concise and easy to use. Um, and it's not set in stone today. We'd like to try these out, see how they work, see what kind of feedback we get. Are we achieving the outcomes we hope for? Um, and if not, we can modify them over time. So how they will work is that, um, the design guideline document will be inserted in the city's development review process, so it's integrated into the development review process to be efficient. Their application will include a design guidelines checklist, so they can demonstrate, um, which guidelines they're going to be, um, um, what's the word, complying with. Um, if guidelines do apply to a project, they should be followed. If they cannot be met due to excessive cost or other hardship, it must be proven. Um, the community development department will review and approve guidelines with other relevant requirements. The DDA, as the entity that was created to be a champion for downtown, uh, will be consulted and, and serve in more of an advocacy role, um, to, to make sure that vision is, is, you know, be, being adhered to. Um, one thing we really want to point out is that, um, these are not onerous design guidelines for very small projects. A business owner just wants to put an awning up on their, on their storefront, very few guidelines will apply. Uh, for much larger projects like a significant, um, renovation of an existing building or new development, um, mu, mu, many more of the guidelines would apply there. So we, we are, um, we want our businesses to be able to make incremental improvements over time. We don't want to discourage that. Um, so the, the, uh, application of the guidelines starts very small and grows with the scale of the project.
Okay, so quickly to walk you through the design guidelines. Um, there are five sections. First of all, the introduction and intent. Um, first of all, the document itself will be given to the applicant. Anyone that is interested in, in developing or starting a project, they would either go to, um, the city, or s, a lot of times they'll come to the DDA first. Either way, um, at that stop point, they, they will be given the document, um, to review. Um, first of all, the introduction and tend, it has that checklist in it. Um, it tells the intent of the guidelines, what projects apply, um, how to be compliant with the guidelines. Um, number two, we, we set out to, uh, tell everyone about South Broadway, you know, why is it significant? What is the history of Inglewood's main street? Um, we point out notable, uh, buildings and places. What are the main street characteristics? What makes Inglewood's main street different from anywhere else? And, um, and what it's like today. Um, just a sample here from one of the business owners that South Broadway has been a hub of small businesses, and they want it to remain, you know, that way, uh, remain special for years to come. Uh, section three is about the vision. So we talk about how it is today and how it was in the past, and we want to establish the vision as well. So we talk about inclusive design, the importance of that. We taught, we set, um, uh, overarching design principles of safe and welcoming for all distinctly Inglewood and vibrant and active. We want all projects to follow those design principles. And then we have some, uh, concepts in there for future design considerations, um, and urging, urging any project to really think big. Um, this is a Bill, a quote from Bill, who's a, um, construction manager. "We work with building owners and small developers," and he says they "look for public investment and revitalization. They expect design standards, um, in desirable areas." Um, section four is guidelines for site design and activation. So here's where we actually get into the me, the guidelines. Um, so site design and activation, we talk about accessible and inclusive design, the streetscape, outdoor dining guidelines, um, off-Broadway activation, because it's not just about Broadway. We really are trying to create this 360, uh, degree main street, so we want to talk about the paseos and the alleys, um, parking and trash, public art. Um, so we identify, for example, the streetscape zone, the curb zone, the accessible route, and what is appropriate in those places. Um, another quote by Kirsten, who we worked with, um, throughout the project. She is in a wheelchair, and we took a lot of advice, uh, from her along the project. And then finally, guidelines for existing and new buildings. Um, street level activation is very important. This is the main street. We don't want, you know, uh, vacant storefronts or, uh, you know, blank walls. So we have guidelines in there to make it active. Um, modifications to existing buildings, because that is desired. Um, building massing and scale, so when you are developing a new building, how can you respond to it, you know, the existing context of South Broadway? Um, materials and color, how to respond to, again, that main street context, what's appropriate. Um, here's a quote from, uh, Bryn, who is a resident. We talked with her, um, throughout the process, and she, um, stated that, you know, she'd like to see more nightlife, but she doesn't feel comfortable walking at night, and so that was important to her. Um, Hillary talked a little bit about this, so I'll just kind of fly through it, but it, it goes to the point that we just want to make sure that everyone knows it's not gonna be an onerous process. If you're just doing interior renovations, the guidelines don't apply. If you're adding an awning and signage, just a couple apply, you know, whatever's applicable applies. If you're adding outdoor dining, you know, we want you to pay attention to, uh, the, the accessible and universal building frontages, um, the streetscape zones, and the outdoor dining. Um, if it's a major renovation or addition, you know, a little bit more, whatever's applicable. And then new construction, you really have to follow all the guidelines. And finally, um, just some other testimonials here. You can see from different people. Um, these are from business owners, uh, primarily. Um, and then one I threw in here, um, I'm actually working on South Broadway in Denver, and, um, I was telling Hillary I was in a meeting, and one of the owners, business owners over there said, "We want to be like Inglewood," so there you go. And finally, next steps, um, we have the design guidelines approval process, so the design guidelines do have to be approved by City Council. We will be going to City Council next week for a study session, um, and then we will be working on the Festival Street Pilot Project, which will be implemented in June. Um, and then final design of streetscape, uh, the DDA will be moving forward with that, um, this year. And that is all we have for you.
Will take any questions?
Great, thank you. Uh, question? From the commission?
Well, excuse me, I have a few questions. Thank you, Chair. Um, I really like all of this. It's gonna be great, but there are a couple things that I think are challenges that maybe weren't completely addressed in your presentation, and I just want to make sure that they're on your radar screen. Um, the bus stop, um, just south of King Supers on the, when the Festival Street comes around and turns north, where the, it basically dead-ends into the Ki, King Supers parking lot, that bus stop right there? On the west, southwest corner?
Festival Street is not by the King Supers. It's on-
Well, it goes, and then it goes, it goes, and then it turns, and then it gets-
Oh, I see, on a coma, yeah.
Yeah, it goes, right, go, a coma dead-ends into the King Supers parking.
Yes.
Yeah, right there. There's a bus stop.
Yep.
And, um, I drive by it frequently.
Yep.
And there's a lot of homeless people that gather there, and they also gather across the street. So I think some lighting and things like that could be a s, easy solution, but have you taken that into consideration, some of the homeless problems that we have around the city of Inglewood?
Yeah, absolutely. So we looked at, um, one of the concepts, uh, that we looked at was activating actually the King Supers frontage of the 3,300 block along South Broadway, but we also looked at, um, at the, the, um, Parkway, Inglewood Parkway, sorry, um, to do a different street section there and actually expand. Um, we talked to the business owner of the wine bar there, and she said, even though she has, um, outdoor cafe seating, that people don't sit there, and she doesn't know if it's because of the bus stop or what. So, um, in general, the, the rule of thumb is more active, more eyes on the street, and the activity goes away. And so we want to provide the space for that to happen. Lighting is important, too, you're right. So, but we need space to put lighting, too. So we do, we did look at, um, Inglewood Parkway, and, and again, this will be, um, further down the road when we get to final design, but there may be some interim things we could do. Um, Hillary is looking at lighting very strongly. We did a lighting study. We looked at what are the lights that are out. Um, this is in the Public Realm Action Plan, too. We have a diagram of, um, we studied all the lights- of, we studied all the lights that are out in the district and so we know where the city needs to turn the lights on and work with Excel in the alleys to get more lights. So we're actively pursuing that. But...
Well, and it can be just increasing police patrols or other safety issues like that.
Yep.
That can help a lot too. So, I mean, that's not part of this, obviously, but...
But that did come up in the process.
Right, okay. Speaking of parking lots and things like that, in one of the slides it has that you're gonna, you would like to require screened parking and it kinda goes hand in hand. What we're talking about is that screened parking's great, but you don't wanna have it too tall so that people feel unsafe either.
Mm-hmm.
And that people can, you know, it's low enough that people can see the businesses and attract people. So...
Right, yeah.
And then, curious about the costs for, for private owners. You said that they can prove their costs and, and if they can't prove their costs or if it's too onerous, what's, what's the next step when people's, when somebody's trying to develop a piece of property within the district?
I mean, in general, that'll be a process that they work through with the city. You know, the, the development review process, they'll go back and forth with that. It's, it's generally up to the city, you know, whether they pass or not. But they fill out, you know, the checklist. The city will ask why if they're not able to meet a guideline, but...
So there's no general threshold of percentage of the cost of the project or anything like that? It's just, okay, you just kind of let the city weigh it and...
We talked about that. And again, when you start to get into, you know, percentages and things like that, or you must meet so many guidelines, it starts to like, it could be more, you know, onerous.
You wanna leave it flexible, is what you're saying?
Right.
You wanna leave it flexible?
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. And then the parking along this section, there's of course the street parking, but a lot of those lots that are behind, both, both on the east and west side are privately owned. And, you know, there could be development there or things like that. Do you know how many of those parking lots are actually owned by the buildings that are on the street of Broadway and they have the behind parking? Is there, is there quite a bit of it or not?
Yeah, I don't know the exact number, but we do have them, the DDA has a map of what is publicly owned versus privately owned.
Yeah, I go to the, I go to the cigar shop a lot for my son, who loves cigars. So there's no parking really back there. There's just like two spaces and so it's just, you know, and then there's that big parking lot for that development there where the pharmacy is and everything. So...
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to check and make sure that, I'm just wanna put it, put parking up on your radar screen, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And then just an itty bitty thing, the building entrances, you talked about pressing a button and you can get in.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we don't want that to interfere with the historical, maybe the historical door in some of these older places and things like that. Are you gonna be taking that into consideration as well?
Yeah, that's a good point. In general, universal design was the top priority in the study.
'Cause I don't know if you're gonna be able to do it at the cigar shop, so...
What's that?
I don't know if you're gonna be able to do it to the cigar shop without ruining the atmosphere, kinda, but especially the back door, but that's okay.
Well, the cigar shop, none of these would, none of these buildings will have to install it until they go to make an improvement. So if the cigar shop becomes something else in the future...
Right.
And they're changing the door or changing, you know, the facade, then that's when the guidelines kick in. But the cigar shop, if it stays for another 50 years, it can stay as it is.
Do you visit it?
No, I don't.
It's quite a little place. I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I actually wanted to build on what Michelle was talking about on Akoma Street. I think that might be that block between Gerard and Hampden, a place to add on this because if we could like activate the backside of those buildings as opposed to just having it be the parking lot for, or the, the storage lots or anything like, that we can come up with ideas there, I think would really help that whole block. I think it would really come to what Michelle was talking about and I think would be great. Either that or backside of King Supers if they could somehow put windows or something on that side street there. Just something that would help, again, get some eyes on, on that. I think it'd be great. And I did wanna touch a little bit more about how it's going to work in practice. So community development review gets a, a plan set in, they review it. And so it's their responsibility to check the, the checklist and then they make comments on it. Is that the only thing? But it sounds like it's not a requirement, but it is a requirement. So maybe just a little understanding on, on how that's actually gonna work in practice.
Sure, I can talk about that.
Yeah, thanks.
I've done this in multiple cities throughout my career. So as staff, we already have one set of design guidelines. Their, ours are rules that you have to do. It's called our zoning code. We review that with any project that comes in. This would be kind of a little bit of a step above that. We would review based on our standards, what people are required to do. And then we also push them towards, here's some things that you should take a look at while you're working on it. Yes, these are not full-on requirements, but they are some standards that we will measure, design by. We will also work with Hillary and the EDDA to ensure that, you know, these are meeting their needs as well when going through these processes. And I can go into more depth if you want me to.
Yeah. No, I, I think Brian, as long as you all are on board with it, that I think is obviously the biggest part. The other question I just had was, the study area is just Eastman to basically Hampden and have a block off Broadway. But it sounded like you said we could be expanding this outside. So it'll only apply to those, that study area or does it apply to a larger?
It only applies to Eastman to Little Dry Creek. Sorry, it's on the very first line. Oh, there it was. So Eastman to Little Dry Creek and then Akoma to Lincoln. So all of those blocks on either side of Broadway.
Thank you.
And I would add that those blocks are also treated a little bit differently in a zoning code and they have been for 20 something years. So it's kind of just matching the pattern of what we've done prior. I would, I think I talked, talked to Hillary about this yesterday. You know, our, our code up to date that we did with Code Next gave us citywide design standards for commercial development, which we had never had before. They were only really in one area and then we moved them citywide. And this is their way of stepping up that citywide into a very important part of our city, which is downtown, and getting just this elevated level of design.
And these are the blocks of South Broadway that fall in the geographic boundaries of the downtown district that the DDA is authorized to invest in.
I have a question, I have a couple of questions. I'm a walker and a drive and park, both. So a couple of things. The sidewalks are not gonna change, correct? The size of the sidewalks are not gonna change and the parking along Broadway is not gonna change? Is that correct?
Right, in general. In some instances, we are doing what we call bulbouts or curb extensions to provide a little bit more space. And that was a question in our survey. We asked people, would you, would you be okay with losing a couple parking spaces to provide more space for landscape? And it was overwhelmingly yes. So we went ahead and did that.
Right, okay. And I like that. I agree with that. Another question, the alley on the east side?
Mm-hmm.
So on the Breakfast Queen side, would that alley go away or would that stay an alley?
No, it would stay an alley.
Okay, so it wouldn't be shut down?
No.
Sandwich board type signing, signage? Cause I saw that you were trying in that part of it, the other signage would be very similar. Would you still allow sandwich board signage?
Yeah, the idea is to give businesses an opportunity to program outside of their storefront.
Okay.
Whether they do sidewalk sale or a sandwich board or cafe dining, whether they wanna do a patio on the side of the building, a rooftop deck or something behind the building. This is how we allow our, our local businesses to grow and expand over time.
Exactly.
In a very constrained area.
Okay, I like that too. And then, one of my other concerns, since I'm a walker and a driver both, when I'm walking, I feel like this, the traffic doesn't slow down. Is there, and I know I saw like some of that signage that would possibly be on the north side there, maybe Eastman or something like that. But how, what is the plan maybe to slow some of the traffic down? And I know once we get activated, that will, but until people feel safe, I don't know how many people will walk, is my concern.
All of these elements will contribute toward traffic calming because they add visual cues that people are in, in the area. The bulbouts, you know, are visual cues to slow down and they, and they create kind of a cadence, right? You are in a different area now. Street trees, pedestrian scale lighting, outdoor tables and chairs, crosswalks, all of those elements, the, the landscape seating areas, all of those elements queue motorists. You're, you're in a people-oriented place. When you have an absence of all those elements, bull steam ahead, it looks, it, it looks like a raceway.
You're right.
And that's why these improvements are so important when you're trying to create a pedestrian-oriented, traditional Main Street experience for people.
Right, okay. Thank you.
There's a lot on the street side, as you mentioned, Breakfast Queen has like a, you know, 20, 30 people most weekends stacked up. And I'm curious, is there more about activating alleys? Obviously, somewhere like Fort Collins does a lot of that and a lot of cities around the world that have really great walkable downtowns activate alleys? I was just curious if there's more that can be talked about because those alleys almost become very walkable for that two or three block length until the street traffic slows down. I think a lot of people might choose to actually just stay in the alley. So I'm just curious about other ideas there.
Yeah. We, we looked at Longmont and Loveland and all of those places. We met with their DDA directors. In those communities, the DDA took it upon themselves to make that investment and that might be something that the DDA does in the future. But for now, these guidelines really encourage private property owners to invest in the rear of their properties and it gives them guidelines on how to do that. But we want those rear frontages to be improved and to really provide a second frontage because the parking is in the rear and a lot of people do enter. And that, where the Breakfast Queen is, that block is, a lot of those businesses are already starting to do that. So they're setting the precedent and we expect that that trend will continue, especially on that block. But it certainly is something that we would love to see continue. We're also, you know, hoping that there's, there's some grants from Excel that we wanna look into for undergrounding the utility lines. That helps a lot when you can put those lines underground. So yes, yes, and yes.
Great. And we're gonna be spray washing those alleys in the spring and the fall this year to improve the atmosphere for those rear seating areas.
So, one more thought just before I forget. Any thoughts? I think the, the variation in heights of building might make this a challenge, but I was thinking about Laramore Square downtown with the overhead lighting. Obviously, that's, road has essentially been closed to traffic permanently, I think now. But even before it was closed, seemed like the overhead lighting sort of became this beacon of that is a district. Yeah, yeah, just overhead. And I wonder if that would also function as a traffic calming measure that doesn't actually impede traffic. I don't know if it has to be, you know, 30 feet high because it's a main road or whatever, but just another thought.
We'll continue looking at that as the design goes forward. I'm sure there was a lot of business owners that were interested in that. It's a lot of wind load, it's a lot of cost. You just have to, you know, we'll get into the engineering and see. And maybe it could be over the intersections or something too. Or we talked about doing the outlines of the buildings to really accent the, and that then you don't have to worry about the wind load, but it could really accent that, you know, the differentiation in building heights too. So we definitely wanna be creative with lighting.
Any other questions? Thank you. A wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Carl?
The, the lighting on 3400 block, that was done about five years ago or so at $600,000. So is this gonna be in addition to that lighting or will, will it be continued like the lighting that's gonna be on the Broadway going south?
Yeah, the plan would be to continue those, that same style of acorn lights and keep the newer ones that are, you know, if they're working, they're new, they're newer, there's no reason to replace them. But the look and feel works very well with this design and so we'd like to extend that through the whole study area on the side streets as well.
And the mid-block crossing at the Gothic, I really don't see the need for that. The crossing would be like 20 feet from those regular sidewalk crossing, you know, those light crossing. And the expense of it is $150,000 or whatever it is. Seems a little hot. And besides that, you're going over to a little parking lot that's maybe 20 cars there. I don't know what, what the crossing's for.
So that's actually been in the city's plans for quite some time. There's, there's a lot of jaywalking right in that segment. People getting to and from the theater. They also go to the little Mexican restaurant and the Conoco shop as well as parking in the lot and on the street. Or they're getting off the bus and they're trying to cross. And so I think that the city had already done analysis around traffic and pedestrian safety in that area and had a plan up to construction documents for a mid-block crossing up there. So we did incorporate that in there in consultation with the ownership of the Gothic Theater and the businesses in the vicinity.
Yeah, and that, that block in particular is over 600 feet long. It's, it's really long. And so a mid-block is about 300 feet from either side. So it's longer maybe than you might think.
Yeah, the north end of it though, there's nothing there. You got a car lot and then across the street is another car lot. So, the, um... This city working on that, I'm not sure. They, they probably started that when the cost was maybe 50,000. But it's a lot more than that now. So it, it's just the cost and where it goes is kind of a roll in my mind. So, all right, that's it.
So first of all, let me just say thank you. I love all of this. It's fantastic and I look forward to seeing where it goes. Excited. I believe the Festival Street will be activated pretty soon here, which is wonderful. I just wanted to speak a little bit to why I actually really like the, the mid-block crossing at the Gothic. To me, it creates that northern gateway for this space. And Amy was talking about, you know, traffic doesn't slow down. And I think having a, that visual cue that you were talking about that far to the north, you know, will really separate out this space from the rest of Broadway in both directions and create those, those gateways that will tell drivers this space from here to here is different and you need to drive differently. So I think it, it serves a really important purpose even besides obviously the, you know, serving as a pedestrian crossing. So I really like that. One concern that I have about not being able to widen the sidewalks or have parklets or other things that go into the right of way is that the, the idea that we'll plant the street trees and then based on, you know, how the business wants to use the space in front of the business, and then we're essentially locked into that. But, you know, if a tree grows there and then a new business comes along and wants to add, you know, dining in front, that means removing a mature tree. You know, there's, there's some, so I'm just, I'm hoping that we can maintain the flexibility to allow those businesses to develop iteratively and to add things and that we're, you know, I think, yeah, I want street trees, I want the accessible route, I, you know, I want all of this. But I think, again, being limited by the right of way and not having the opportunity to, to sort of expand that pedestrian space means that everything that we sort of choose is potentially locked in, in a way. So just something to think about.
Have you ever talked about the 3400 block as being a one-lane street and then the parking is diagonal? I think Fort Collins did that.
The focus of this particular project is not on the street right-of-way per se, it's on the kind of building edge to curb. That's what we're really focused on.
All right, last chance, anybody else?
Do you want to take in with Stephen?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Stephen, on the phone line, any questions, comments?
No, I'm good.
Thanks, Stephen. Well, thank you very much, the wonderful presentation. I'm in full support. I think Noah actually said a lot of the same comments that I had. All of these features that come home, the traffic flow are absolutely going to change. It's going to add a lot of opportunity for the businesses there to really make this place feel like a destination and not just thoroughfare.
Right.
Just one small thing, I just know from some work that they've done in Denver about the size of the planter boxes for the street trees to make sure that they're big enough to, that these trees will survive.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, now, we are going to move on to the public hearing for ZON 2024-001 Global Storage Plan Unit Development. We are going to start this section of the meeting with staff presentation. And then we're going to hear from the applicant and then we'll hear from folks that are here in support. And then we will go from there. And we do have a number, we have six folks signed up. Can we allow people to sign up still or are we close for that?
You can just call in, but first I need a motion to open the public.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we need a motion to open this public hearing. Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion to open ZON 2024-001.
I second.
Amy seconds, and can we get a vote?
Mr. Hagerty?
Yes.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
Ms. Cicero?
Aye, sorry.
That's okay. Chair Martinez?
Aye.
So, motion passes. So what we're going to do is just do one big swearing in, taking of the oath when you come up to speak. If you are, please state your name and your position if you were staff or your address if you're a member of the public. So if everybody who wishes to address could please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that you will tell the truth in this proceeding before the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Eric?
I'm Eric Sampson, planner two with Community Development. So, yeah, so this is a PUD rezoning for 2800 West Shenango Avenue. The approximate size of the project is about 9.8 acres. The current zoning is medium residential at the moment, R2B. And then, again, the request is to do a planned unit development, which aside from a straight base district rezoning, allows for multiple uses that cross those zone-type districts. Oh, yeah, sorry. And so then the applicant is Robert Beatty with Global Storage. So surrounding land uses and the subject parcels itself, it's comprised of four parcels, which will ultimately be combined in a minor subdivision if the PUD is approved with City Council. To the north and west, you have existing residential neighborhoods, single lot, single-family R1B zone district. And then to the east, you have the main site of Global Storage, the applicant, and that is currently zone I1 for light industrial. And then the property borders the city of Littleton to the south, where there is some open space storage as an industrial use. And there is also a, further to the east, a three-story multifamily residential project, both of those in the city of Littleton. Site history, it has always had some sort of industrial use that has been on there. Used to be a landscaping company very long time ago. And now there is currently really nothing going on there right now, but there is a portion that is being used for firewood sales. And you will notice in that there is a portion of the eastern part of this project that is kind of split zoned with an I1 zoning, which when you take a look at the aerials, you'll see that there are some industrial uses happening on that portion of the property currently. So just a brief overview of the project history. They came to do a development review team with the city on February 14th of 2023. And then they had several neighborhood community meetings, one, the first one being November 20th of '23, second one being September 24th of '24. And then the last one was held last evening on March 3rd of '25. And just a point of clarification on that, the code requires that the applicant hold a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission within 180 days of the neighborhood meeting. So just because it's been a slow-rolling project, so they had the third neighborhood meeting last night because they missed the 180-day deadline by one day. So just needed to check that box. The PUD was officially submitted on February 26th of '24. And tonight is the Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, and they are scheduled to go for the City Council Public Hearing on April 7th. For the project overview, it would allow for a mix of several kind of industrial base uses, which would be basically extending the Global Storage site. And that would include outdoor storage, it would include equipment and retail sales. And the main reason that is, it falls into the PUD category is there are some single-family residences existing on the site currently, and they would like to keep those structures for office sales and employee housing. So getting to the project details a little bit, one with landscaping, the code does require certain landscaping requirements for uses that are not compatible with another. For, in this instance, a type-three buffer would be required between any sort of industrial use and residential use. So what's required by the code is a 15-foot width buffer. What the applicant is proposing at A is a 25-foot buffer between the existing residential neighborhood. And at point B on the map is a 32-foot buffer between those residences there. In addition, along Decatur Street, there would be a 15-foot buffer required there, and that is what the applicant is providing. And then to the south, that would require a type-two buffer of 10 feet. And that is what the applicant is proposing there as well. For project details and screening, the eight-foot-tall screening fence would be provided along South Decatur. And this would also include landscaping in front of that. You can see in the bottom left kind of what that vegetation would look like, the exact numbers we don't have yet, but we'll be able to calculate those out once the proper permits have been applied for and reviewed by staff. And so for other city department reviews, the traffic, Public Works traffic recommendation was that the access off of Union Drive be reconstructed to be compliant with the American with Disabilities Act. And they also felt that with the traffic study, there was no need for a second access to the parcel. So that access off of Decatur at point two would be closed off and only allowed for emergency access only. Supporter offers opposition received. We did receive one letter from someone in the Shenango neighborhood that didn't mention the project specifically by address, but they did talk about the truck traffic on Decatur. And staff feels that the applicant blocking off that access off of Decatur would solve some of that heavy truck traffic that was referred to. And then for staff recommendation, we recommend approval of this PUD. Public Works and Utilities also did recommend that due to the amount of site disturbance that will happen to create the outdoor storage facility would require a detention pond for stormwater management purposes. And then, again, the two traffic recommendations, that access off of Decatur be emergency only and that the access of Union would be improved to be ADA compliant. So we would recommend approval with those three conditions. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Hi, thank you, good presentation. I just want to make sure I understand the request because it is today industrial, right?
Today it is zoned R2B residential.
Oh, it's R2B now. So they want to make it industrial, but at the same time, keep this R2B or keep this housing.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it would be just single-family residential. It wouldn't have the density that is allowed in the R2B zone district. Basically, in an R2B zone district, you could do duplex, you could do four-unit multifamily houses or up to six units attached. So that goes away, basically the only thing that remains is single-family detached residential.
Okay.
Now, is that allowing the existing use of those? Would it ever, would the PUD allow for more single-family homes?
That would require an amendment to the PUD.
Okay, so it's just grandfathering in the residential that's there. Can you give us a little bit more history or if there's, or maybe this is for the applicant about the delays in bringing this?
I will defer to the applicant on that.
Okay, we'll get there, okay. Yeah, can, oh, sorry, Colin, go ahead.
This area was one of the locations within our comp plan that was identified as a residential transition zone and kind of a high priority area. I'm a little surprised that staff is recommending approval for it, for this use. Can you give a little more background on why that's the case when we've just gone through the comp plan that would show that this is a really prime potential for some sort of residential development or transition zone?
Yeah, so we took a look at the site and currently there's no infrastructure there to support an R2B intense style of development. And then the uses in the past have largely been industrial on-site. So the comp plan does also call for the retention of existing local businesses within the city. So Global Storage is a local business and their expansion on that would meet that criteria of keeping local businesses in the city.
Is the current use out of compliance?
No, it's vacant, aside from what has been grandfathered in.
Will the, just to make sure I'm understanding also, so the Decatur will be emergency access only, then will the remainder of the site be accessed from the existing storage facility? So basically off, I mean, from the interior of the existing site?
From Union.
From, so Union but through the existing site onto this new area?
Yes.
Is the proposed, okay. Also some questions on the landscaping buffer. There's a lot of trees along this area, along Decatur especially, there's proposing a 15-foot, but is that incorporating or is that inclusive of the existing significant amount of trees that are in that area? Or are we going to be losing some of those trees in that segment?
They would be able to incorporate some of the existing trees to meet the criteria for code for what might need to be added.
Sure, I just want to confirm that, do we need to make that buffer larger to include that entire strip to make sure we're not losing those trees as well?
I don't believe that would be necessary. I don't think that would have any impact on that.
Okay.
There's a requirement for an eight-foot screen? Looks like it's a fabric-type screen attached to the fence. Is there a requirement to maintain that? Or is that just, what does that look like after 10 years?
Yeah, so there would be a requirement on the behalf of the property owner and applicant to keep that maintained and in good condition.
Any feedback from the people that live across the street?
Just the, the letter that we received from an address on Shenango, that again, I said didn't, the letter was included in your staff packet and didn't mention the project specifically, but a lot of it was geared towards the existing traffic that is the heavy truck traffic that's on Decatur.
There was a noted in there, there wasn't really much detail, but at one of the neighborhood meetings, at least one sentiment of a desire for no further residential development here.
Yeah, the second neighborhood meeting, there was some concern voiced about that area being developed as residential.
Can you quantify that a little bit? Was this a single voice? Was there more sort of information? Why was it traffic was it?
So I would like to defer to planning manager on that because that was the meeting I was unable to attend.
Sure, I can't remember how many.
We just lost your mic.
Sorry, I must turn it off. I don't remember the exact number, but there was a lot of discussion about, one, the traffic that the trucks were coming in off Shenango and entering in that entrance off Decatur and that being a concern of the neighborhood. I can't remember if it was one or two or what number it was, that had mentioned that they didn't really want any more residential in the area. And they didn't seem to have that much of a concern with this type of use. But there's also people that did have a concern with this type of use. So it kind of goes both ways. And I think there's probably people that represent both sides here tonight. So hopefully we hear from everybody. I am having a hard time finding that letter of opposition in the packet if you, someone could help me, but maybe in the interim, I guess just a, dang, I had a fricking question. Oh, the stormwater system, that's been a requirement now. I'm noticing it's now going to be a pumped system. How is that going to be maintained, operated, made sure that it's actually going to work as well since there's no infrastructure here to be able to tie into?
We do have staff from Public Works here to be able to address those questions. So I don't know if you want to talk to them now.
Well, I have a question for, it looks like, is the detention pond only during construction only for the addition of gravel and is not an ongoing requirement? Or is this an ongoing stormwater?
This would be ongoing from what I understand.
Other questions for Eric?
I was gonna, I'd like some more information about the stormwater detention when we're ready to switch over.
I did have one more question on that screening. Is that best practice? I know we had something similar, I think, on the waste management facility just to the east. Is that the same that they, I thought they did like a sladding more on their fence? I guess, is it, it doesn't look like the, pretty similar world, but like obviously it's going to be behind some landscaping, maybe this is the best way to do it. I just, is there a preference from the city for either a slat versus the screen or maybe any, anything on that context?
Not that I'm aware of. It's just the purpose of getting the area properly screened.
Yeah, I just want to echo Colin's earlier comments about losing nine acres of what is a use by right for missing middle housing, which has been a huge conversation and a point of focus just across the board and specifically mentioned in the comp plan for this area. So, yeah, I mean, that's just a, that's a tough one for me. Yeah, so if there's any more that you'd like to add about the preferential use to continue, you know, for this versus opportunities for medium-density housing?
I don't have anything to add. Oh, Brian, do you want to chime in on that?
I can tell you that we didn't make the decision lightly to make the recommendation. It's tough. It's a very tough, tough subject to weigh when you have a property that's been vacant since its annexation, basically, and it's been zoned that way almost that whole time and never developed versus someone coming in now saying, hey, we have a use, we want to expand our business. expand our business use to business in Inglewood. So it, it is not an easy decision. That's why that decision lies with you guys to make that recommendation. We make a recommendation to you, you all collectively make the recommendation to council. Council ultimately has the most difficult decision in choosing whether to approve or deny.
Eric or Brian, could you just give us a little bit of an idea? Let's say this, we recommend and this gets approved as a, as a planned unit development. How does that limit the ability in the future, 10, 15 down, years down the road for redevelopment and highest best use of, of this land if that does change? I mean, yeah, just could you talk about sort of the, the process for that?
So they would need to go through a PUD amendment process. So they would need to go through another set of public hearings, Plan Z and council to approve the changes to the PUD district site and district plan to allow for higher density housing options.
Or the other option they would have would be to vacate the PUD, say nothing ever got built. They did all the rezoning and then nothing moved forward and they wanted to vacate that and go back to.
And it would revert to R2B or R2C? It would revert to the prior zoning at that point?
It would revert back to the split R2B and I-1 that they have now.
Got it.
Did, did you say though, nothing could be built? Like so, say they build an outdoor storage facility for a number of years and then can they vacate the PUD if there's a desire to go back to the split zoning? No, I think the best route that way would be to do another PUD amendment or a brand new PUD. But if they, if they, if this were approved and then Global Storage said, hey, we're just going to move, we don't want to build on that and it remained vacant, then I think that would be a viable option to vacate. But if somebody went in and built, it, it's less likely just from a planning standpoint that they would want to vacate. And then, then you would have a use that now has non-conforming zoning, that you have all these buildings constructed. So it gets a little bit more complicated that way.
Any other questions for Eric? Michelle?
Just briefly, but I did read in here somewhere that the housing is mainly for the people who work there, correct? That's, that's on the property now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And would this limit that and restrict it to workforce housing in any way or would they have the ability to lease those homes or rent those homes to anybody?
I believe they are, would be allowed to do long-term rental.
Okay. All right, any other questions? I know we'll speak with the applicant. We want to, do we have, we do have questions for, about, words, other staff from Public Works. Can we just call up?
Yeah.
We have a staff member here from Public Works that we can ask a few questions of.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Brandon with Public Works.
Hi, I have a quick one. Are there, do you know, are there utilities in Decatur?
Sanitary and water.
Oh, utilities, I'm sorry, okay. Do we have other questions?
I'm not 100% sure about stormwater.
We do have a representative from Utilities here as well.
Okay.
So Kyle will generally be stormwater and traffic.
Got it.
And then Tasha in the back corner will generally be things like water and sewer.
Okay. And I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Kyle Branham.
Kyle. Questions for Kyle?
Yeah, tying in for the storm pump, stormwater system, how's that going to work and where's it going to go and how's it going to be confirmed to be maintained?
Yeah, so the detention pond will be tied into our system and as far as maintaining that system, the applicant will be responsible for maintaining it and we will also have an easement through that area in case they do not maintain it. Then we will come in and maintain it and they will be charged for that.
So then does that pump all the way back up to Union or does that go through their site and continue going back east towards the river?
I'm not 100% sure where, how that connects, but I don't know if the applicant.
All right, and we can get to that. We can ask that at the, thank you.
Yeah.
Any, any other Public Works? Okay, then just a quick question for Utilities if you don't mind. We're getting everybody involved tonight.
Hi, I'm Tasha Neal, engineer two at Utilities.
Hi, Tasha. Is there existing infrastructure in Decatur to support either housing development now or in the future?
We have an 18 inch sewer, sanitary sewer line and also a few water lines. For us to determine that, we need to look at demand and look at what they have built out and we have a water system study that we do as well as we'll look at it for fire demand. So we'd have to get that information to look at that.
Okay, there was a comment earlier, and I'm not sure if I heard it quite right, but that there wasn't adequate infrastructure to support housing at this point. I mean, would, do you tend to agree with that or just unsure?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We, we ask for demand, water demand and go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else about Utilities? Yeah, David?
With change in the use, let's say 20 or 30 years from now that we do want to rezone it or they want to move their business, does it become more difficult to rezone this and build housing there for whatever reason?
That would probably be so.
What was the question again?
Basically, does, does having a rezone, let's say that this business is here for 20 years and then suddenly we're, you know, even more underwater on housing and we decide, hey, this does need to be housing, does having this use expanded make that more challenging? Does it make it into a brownfield that's, you know, now you're spending more to fix up a contaminated site? Is there any risk like that?
It, it could certainly be a concern. I mean, that's everything you do, whether it's, you know, the Kimco project or other projects where you have to make sure that we're thinking long-term, is this what we need in our community? Is this where we're going? I, I can't make that decision for you. I can't really give you a whole lot of information on whether this would turn into a brownfield site when I don't know whether it's one right now or not. But that's certainly something that you guys can weigh in your decision-making is what, what are the ramifications of making this decision now 15, 20 years down the road?
This is probably a question for the applicant more than anybody else. Is there some way for us to understand, is there some huge demand for additional storage for trucks and boats and things that, I mean, this doesn't apply to everyone obviously. So I'm kind of curious where the demand is coming from and how that's, you know, it looks like a pretty significant add to the adjacent site. So I'm just kind of curious where that's coming from.
Yeah, I'd refer to the applicant. Any other questions for Utilities?
Yeah, any other questions for Utilities? Thank you, Tasha, appreciate it. Thank you, Kyle. All right, we'd love to hear from the applicant now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Robert Beatty, I'm one of the owners of Global Storage. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about our project. Aaron, to answer your earlier question of why it has taken so long for us to get it in front of you guys, it has been a long inter process. We are the owners of the property. We also have other jobs that we have maintained along the way and in working with the city and going through their requirements and processes, it's taken us a little longer than desired. We've been hard at it, pretty hard for last year and think we've got it to the point that satisfies and want to be a good neighbor to our neighbors and continue to develop a good product. So I appreciate the opportunity to talk about it. Eric, arrow down. Sure, which clicker am I clicking? This one? Okay. I'm up. All right, just to give you a reference of where the site is, I think you guys kind of all understand where it is. You know, those are our two properties. The existing blue line is existing Global Storage. The yellow area is the area that we're proposing to transition from what was the nursery and firewood business to turn it into Global Storage Contractor Storage Facility. So we're looking to add approximately 23 lots for Contractor Storage. You know, you asked about our demand, we have been full and continue to be full and usually have a waiting list. So yes, there is a, a strong demand given the location and then, and the proximity to Santa Fe. It makes it a desirable place for our, our tenants. Our tenants consist mostly of, are contractors and car and tow companies. So we have a range of stucco companies, masons, utility companies, roofers that use the facility to store trailers, extra material and supplies. So that's, that's really the use of the property. You know, we talked about the screening, new fencing and screening going down the Decatur and on the north and east side of the property. That is, the screening we use is a 98% blackout screening. The reason why I use it is it's a heavy industrial screening. It works better than the slats. When we've used the slats in the past, they crack the PVC. Within the first year, they dry out and they crack. This fencing, we have some of the screening in our yard has been in there for the last five years and it still looks good. When it does get messed up, we go in and replace it. So that's kind of our, our ongoing maintenance that we do to the property. So obviously from a site survey perspective, this is where the retention drainage, you can kind of see right there, the retention pond, that is a low spot on the property that we're going to turn into the retention pond. Water kind of accumulates there today. The recommendation of the city is to use the, a pump method to, if, if and when it actually needs to pump, which I highly doubt it ever will, but if it does, we have the ability to have the, the pump system that will pump it out and it will go over to sheet flow across the rest of our property over on the east side. So and exit out through the east, southeast corner of the property down toward the river. So that's another picture of the screening that Eric showed, giving you the density of the bushes and plants and trees per the city requirements. And that would be what we'd be putting down Decatur and around the back of the residential side. That is a typical driveline of what one of our interior lot roads look like. We maintain a professional looking and appearance of a storage facility. So everything's fenced. We have security cameras throughout. We patrol the property both day and night from a perspective. We have an onsite manager who lives onsite in one of those houses we mentioned to maintain and, and security as well as cleanliness of the property. Just some highlights of we've gone through the public PUD process, through our neighborhood meetings and trying to be a good neighbor for our neighbors. You know, we're, we've eliminated the access on to Decatur, so that is only going to be for emergencies. We are rebuilding the entrance down on Union to make it ADA compliant and prove and eliminating the dip that's there today. Obviously, the landscaping buffer, drainage retention pond per the city requirements with a city easement on top of that and then the eight foot fencing with the 98% blackout screening. So that's kind of what I got. Short and sweet.
Thank you, Robert. Questions?
I have a quick question. How much lighting will there be on the site?
So we do put corner lighting on that's a directionally down, non-up, up projecting at the corners of the, within the interior roads to make it secure or help with security. But it's, it's a, whatever you call it, the, the low light, aim down light, whatever you call that.
You're limiting light pollution.
Yes, I hate light pollution.
Yeah, great, thank you.
And those are also motion sensitive, so they, they go on when they see motion and then they turn off.
Does your business generate sales or use tax for the city?
Property tax.
It, just property tax? The actual like payment for the storage doesn't generate any tax?
Okay. So the city of Rapid did change the way they treat storage yards from a property tax perspective.
Colin?
Is there additional requirements because it is outdoor storage for cars, vehicles, for oils and things that might leak off for those retention? Like is it actually better to have a retention type of facility as opposed to something that might free drain into the river?
So we, we don't make a special permit for that. It is only for storage. It's not intended for, we don't allow people to go in there and, you know, they're not supposed to be in there gutting cars and so forth. And if we do find that someone's doing that, we either stop them or we kick them out.
So maybe that's a good, how, how do you maintain that compliance, I guess? Do you have people, how does that work?
Well, we have an onsite manager there's, you know, every evening and knows the people onsite. We do patrol with, we do use a drone on occasion to go over all the storage facilities just to kind of say, hey, what's going on in all your lots? Just to maintain and make sure we know what's happening inside the lots.
And I guess are those individual lots fenced and screened?
Yes.
And then are they reconfigurable or are they set as one size and that's what you get?
They are, they are reconfigurable, but generally speaking, they're, once it's built, we don't really reconfigure and we rent, we rent it if necessary to, as is.
And everybody has their own spot, like each renter? In the process, and I appreciate, and I wasn't intending to, you know, the long process that it's taken.
When you do it, I will, I will argue when you do it yourself as the business owner, it is a lot of process. So it's, you know, I respect the process. I've learned a lot about it and it's, it's a lot, so.
Yeah, no, no, I completely understand.
I appreciate Eric and him putting up with all my questions and Brian because, you know, I call it, it's like, okay, what do I need now? And how do we solve this? And so, you know, working with all departments and coming up with the correct drainage plan and how it works and so forth to make it right.
So my question is, is since you started the process until now presenting it to us, has there been a change in sort of your design? Has there been a change in use? What does this iterative process look like?
So the iterative process really adding, you know, redefining the landscape buffer, doing the drainage. I mean, the property's been how it is for the last 100 years. It's always perk drained and so with the city requirements, they wanted a retention pond, so that's what we put in the retention pond. I expect it to continue to perk drain, truthfully.
Yeah, is there any impervious surface being added?
No.
Colin?
Other than gravel.
So.
We also aren't building any permanent structures other than fencing.
But I think all the structures that are onsite are remaining just from what I'm, I'm seeing. And so one of them is that house that has a separate owner, but it's apparently that parcel five is part of this development. But is there going to be a buffer, landscape buffer in between those two houses? Anything added? I don't know if we can show the, where you have the A, B and C landscaping?
A, B and C, let me see here. I think you're talking about the houses up there in the top right triangle.
Yeah, because parcel five should be within that yellow, it's showing outside of.
Let me go back to Eric's presentation. He had a different picture.
Yeah, wait.
Whoa, did I get it?
Yep, that one right there. So the B line is the backside of those two parcels that are outside this development. Those are both going to stay a single family residential.
Yes.
The red line goes along kind of in between those two houses and it shows that that lot, that parcel five is part of this development. But is there any buffer that's going to be provided in that area?
We were not planning on a buffer in between that area because that is already residential house to residential house.
Okay. Let's think about that one for a minute, but, okay. Is there anything that limits you from taking that house down and putting storage then in that area?
I would have to file for a demo permit.
But no modification to the PUD?
That's their question.
Okay.
These are like my questions.
Yeah, 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 you're good. I, I guess, do we want to, we, I might want to consider requiring some sort of buffer in that area to, just to make sure that if, for some reason that one goes away, that we would have some sort of.
We could do a, if we change it, we'll put a buffer in.
Something.
At the moment, it'd be hard to put a buffer in just because it's two residential houses.
Other questions for Mr. Beatty?
Is the green space in these buffers going to be irrigated?
Yes, it'll be drip irrigated.
Is there any possibility to do something that's more xeric so that it's not, because I mean, it might look nice, but no one's hanging out there and it seems like a waste of water other than keeping things alive and is it possible to at least stay away from turf grass and things like that?
There will not be any turf grass. It will be a gravel based base with trees and bushes and we will use drought tolerant trees and bushes.
Got it.
Is the plan.
Thank you.
And actually, building on that, I think I'd ask a question I forgot about right now. On Decatur Street, there's a pretty good strip of trees that are.
There are six down there now.
Say again?
There's about six trees on Decatur now. Those will remain.
It feels like there's even more than that. Will all those remain?
The plan is that those remain, yes.
So that'll be within the 15 foot buffer? Okay.
All right, folks, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Beatty.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the folks who have signed up for the public and we're going to do this in order of people who wish to speak in support of the PUD and then, and then we will go to those, any of those who are here to speak against. So first I have signed up Butch Hall. Hi, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, thanks for listening.
Thanks for listening. I've been a resident of Shenango 2900 block for nearly 50 years and I have some concerns about even about the multifamily listing that is in place already. In July of last year, July 10th through July 30th, I had a traffic monitored device set up in the street in front of my house. In that 20-day period, there was 5,940 vehicles back and forth on a short block, it's not a short block, but on our street. And that is way astronomical than what it needs to be. We don't want to see more traffic on that street. We have kids and families that like to be outside and in their yard. I've witnessed several near misses in the years I've been there. I'm very concerned about that. We like our streets. The streets are starting to deteriorate. In the past, is all that's been done is chip seal and that lasts for several years. Well, it's starting to fail. It needs to be done again. Needs to be taken care of. And that's the city's expense, not the landowners. If you go back and look at the developer that set up that, those homes down there, Shenango and two other streets are to be maintained by the City of Inglewood. The volume of traffic and the speed that goes up and down through there, a high volume, like I said, nearly 6,000 vehicles. Some of, and everything is documented here from that traffic device that was set up gives their speed, number of vehicles and everything. So that, and the damage to our streets that's going on now from heavy traffic, I don't want it to look like Union, West Union Boulevard going, going up and even from, from Federal to Santa Fe. You almost need a four-wheel drive just to get through there. It is so rotted, rotted out and rutted and the bridge isn't much better, but I know the bridge is going to be replaced at a later date. So. And they've referred to, I've talked to Bob earlier this evening about it, that they're going to block off Shenango or Decatur entrance into that property. And that would help a lot. There has been less traffic. I've communicated with Bob ever since our meeting in September. I've sent him photos of other vehicles going in. I've sent photos to the city council and they were passed on to the city manager. With that being blocked off will help a lot to eliminate all the heavy traffic. And even, even tonight, just before we came here, three heavy vehicles went down our street. A haulback, a heavy-duty wrecker, and another pumper truck. I don't know if they all went into a global storage unit or not. In the past, I have seen them go in there, but Bob has tried to correct that. And it has been a noticeable difference.
Okay.
But as far as high-density volume, that little street can't handle that much more traffic.
I get it. One second, I'm, I don't mean to cut you off. I failed to say at the beginning, public comment's limited to three minutes, but I want you to finish because I did not give you that constraint at the beginning. So one quick question I have for you is, considering what you've heard tonight, are you speaking in support of the PUD?
No, I'm not speaking for it or against it or anything.
Okay.
I understand it's business and they have their opinion, I have my opinion.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask one question, actually, Butch?
Mr. Hall.
Sorry. Can I ask just one follow-up? Are you, are you saying that you think the traffic is coming from federal into the storage unit that's going down Shenango right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And you're just hoping that that gets closed off at?
Decatur.
Decatur.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what you were. Perfect. Thank you.
And to confirm, Mr. Beatty, that is the plan, is to close it off and only have that as emergency access.
I'm sorry. I apologize, but you'll need to go back up to the mic or do it after public.
I apologize. Since our meeting in September with which we actually have installed an interior gate to stop people from coming out from the other side of the storage facility out to Shenango. And so that has made an improvement for them. And then we've consciously tried to encourage any of our people that are out on that, going out that way to make a right-hand turn down Decatur, which is the primary access.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hall?
Has there been any traffic study done at all on this?
It's in the packet. It's the whole last part of the packet.
That's it.
It's that 200 pages there.
There's lots of pages. That's good times.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, next, and again, if, three-minute limit for public comment and I would really like to hear from folks in support of the PUD first and then we will make time to hear folks that would be against it. So next on my list, I have Pam Bissard. Okay. We will come back. Joel, Joe Getz. Okay. Andre Brower. Okay. We'll come back. Dave Hilterbrand. Okay. And Jude Brower. Okay. All right. Anybody else here this evening that has not signed up that would like to speak in favor of the PUD? Remember, sir. If you could, just state your name and.
My name is Skip Const. I live at 2722 West Union, which is in between all of this.
I'm sorry, 2722?
West Union.
West Union.
The road that comes down in front of my home used to be a driveway to get into Global Storage. We had a lot of conversations. We were having 50 to 100 cars and trucks a day down this dirt road, which meant that I had the city out there three or four times a year grading that road so that it was not looking for cars. They put a gate in, which is the same thing that they have done on Decatur. I still get two or three cars a day. And that's because of GPS. GPS is telling people trying to buy firewood that that is Shenango. It's not. I have been real good about going out and speaking to them. Say, look, this is where you got to go. They're all good about it. They all showed me their GPS. It is not their fault. The city has put up a sign at the end of the road, no outlet. That has helped it also. The conversations on the black netting, I've been looking at that black netting for the last six, seven years. As soon as it starts getting deteriorated, it's being fixed. It is, like he said, a much more permanent than the slats. The slats break. The slats just get destroyed. The netting is an easy fix. You take a new section out, put a new section in, takes a few hours, it's done. Slating is a full day minimum. Makes better sense. We've had discussions. We were not always on a friendly basis. I've been on that property for 13 years. So all of this is different. As long as, and we've had this conversation, with what they're doing and what they're proposing, I don't have a problem with it. If it changes, there will be a problem and they know this. And they know that I am very vocal. I will do everything I can to help them. If they destroy it, I will do everything I can to put them down. And that's me. Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let's go back up to the top of our list. Speaking against Pam Bissard.
Hello.
Hi.
So I actually spoke with you guys with Waste Management about the easement and so, let's see. How do I change this? So this is going to be the same issue. I said I was going to be back, so now I'm back. Thanks. Okay, so this is Global Storage map. Here's my easement right here. This is Global Storage. This is us. I own 2650 West Union and 2680 West Union. Waste Management's down here. We had the discussion about the easement. Waste Management does have the ability to use it through their titles, which I had said, but I was concerned about the easement being overburdened. Waste Management did say that they weren't going to overburden it. They're using their own egress and ingress on their property. They do have seven to eight pickup trucks that they use down here for the engineers, but they agreed to that and that's what's, what's happening. So the issue is, is that all this traffic that they've been talking about no longer going down their areas, which is over here and over here, they're all going down this easement. So just to give you some history on this, 26, where Global Storage is now, they always use this gate. We always used our gate. There was always a gate down here. There's a gate here and here for those that were landlocked, which used this easement. This is historical. Again, 2690, they stored RVs. There was no gate. They used it to get off to Union Avenue through this gate. We used our gate. So then Global Storage came in. And so when Global Storage came in, it caused havoc. I didn't own, well, my parents have owned the property since the 70s. So they put this gate in and this gate up here, which as you noticed, they didn't even mention it tonight, that's their ingress and egress into their property. They use it for like two or three acres. They diverted all of this traffic over to the easement. And now, and now with this proposal, they're going to double the volume of traffic over to this easement, which was intended for these two landlocked facilities. This is their gate. It's right off Union Avenue. This is the easement. It's about 50 feet. They only use it for two to three acres. And I asked them at the time through one of the neighborhood meetings, like the first neighborhood meeting, they didn't even mention they even had a gate. So second one, I'm like, why are you using your gate? They had a.
I'm sorry, you're, you're out of time. Yeah.
Can I just spend one more minute just to get to the main thing?
You can take until your four-minute timer is up.
Oh, I can't?
You can. Go ahead. Forty-five seconds.
This is my easement below Waste Management, I mean below Global Storage, where Waste Management goes in, or Waste Manag, where Global Storage goes out. This is, this is the chaos because it's, they've completely overburdened it. They drive horrible and it's not a two-way access. It's only 16 feet wide. This was an accident that recently happened that they just flee and leave. Here is, and then I'll just, I'll end at this. This is a, what we just had done to tell, show the easements, facilities, utility poles, et cetera. It's certified. And so this is their property, our property, and this is one grown-up. So this is the easement. Here's the property line, or here's the property line. We have one easement on our side, which is public service. It was done in 1954. It's specific, it, it's very narrow, but allows access.
I'm sorry. This already got, yeah. Thank you. Okay. I, I got to cut it off. We understand. Thank you. We are, we will get there. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. We can, we can ask questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so please stay where you are for a moment.
I'll just ask a question.
We have some questions from the commission.
Right. So I remember when you spoke to about Waste Management and that easement. We're just talking about your fence getting damaged though mostly is what we're talking about. We're not talking about, you don't have a residence here, right? I just want to make sure we understand that there's no home here. We're speaking about your residence and also, and, okay.
Industrial property or the landlocked two properties below us, which is about two acres.
Is, besides coming to planning and zoning, have you reached out to the city regarding any other remedy? Have you, have you spoken?
I did. In it, so, well, first of all, my take is use your own ingress and egress. You have your own gate there and that's historically what's always been used. Apparently, they want to use it for their two or three acres or whatever, but it's vacant right now. The company's left again, it's vacant. They should use their own ingress and egress and leave that as, as, I'm also putting them on notice that they don't even have right to use it, period. They should vacate it and no longer use it because they don't have access. It's my property and it's, it's a public service easement.
Other questions?
From the, actually, we can ask the city. Never mind. I, I'm listening to what you're hearing or what you're saying and we'll have some additional thoughts, I'm sure.
Okay. And what, what do I do? I mean, I'm somewhat new to this process, Waste Management first. I mean, to move forward to get this stuff addressed because originally I didn't think it was an issue because of my understanding their company's being sold.
Sure. I mean, I don't think we're the correct board to ask that question of.
But you guys are approving it, so who do I need to go to?
Well, we're providing a recommendation.
Oh, I see. Okay. Okay.
If I may, yeah, when they go to get their permit, I think you need to speak to the building department, the permitting department. Does that sound right, Brian? When they discuss an easement and where things kind of go?
So if it's traffic-related, they need to talk to Public Works. Public Works would have looked at the project for review and we have Public Works here. I understand that easements are agreements from private property owners. They're not, the city is generally not necessarily involved in how they're dedicated. So there's a lot of things that we can't really give advice on because we weren't there when it occurred.
But does the city have a requirement that they would need to access their sites in some way, shape, or form? Obviously, they did a traffic study.
Chime in from Public Works.
Okay. Yeah.
Or.
Oh, I'm.
Just wanted to, thank you, Ms. Bissard.
Okay.
Thank you. If you could just state your name.
I'm Tim Host, Deputy Director of Public Works. There, there is no requirement that it has to be a, through an easement or not. Each property needs access to the public right of way and if it's through an easement, that's fine per the code.
Other questions for?
So the, the site doesn't have to access through its own site? If there is an easement that they have access to that has been negotiated, that would be sufficient for Public Works side of things?
Correct, yeah.
So it would, they would have to go through vacating and set easements or something along those lines to, to base? But then if, say they didn't have the easement, they would have to be able to access their entire site from their site?
Right. We would have to give them access at some point, but since they have this easement already, they're established, that satisfies the requirement that they have access to the right of way.
Well, but, thank you.
Thank you. I think, any more questions for Public Works? Okay. Thank you. I'm going to move on to the next speaker from the public, Joe Getz.
Is the button with the star on it?
I rent the property at 2650. I own a construction company there, run it out of there. I've been there about six months. Since then, Global Storage tow trucks have ran into that fence five times, hit one of my vehicles and ran away. If you double all that traffic. If you double all that traffic up, the tow trucks don't stop. The tow trucks, I have an office there and a yard. They honk their horns all the way down that easement. Don't even stop at your stop sign, go through that intersection. I run a heavy truck, I can't even get out. The tow trucks come in, there's also a junkyard in there. You're talking about a detention pond? They're tearing vehicles apart. They're doing oil changes. You're not even, you said you're watching the yard? I think Pam's got pictures to say no. You say you fix your fence? Pam's got pictures of the fence being tore down for the last six months. So, really? I can't even get out of my own yard because of the tow trucks. The construction people, they have, have great common sense. But the tow trucks have zero, zero tolerance. The other day, when I was coming in with my truck, trucker talk, I have more lug nuts than they have, he had to back up. He flipped me off, he flipped me off because he had to back up. I was halfway down that private drive, and he wanted to push me off. Tow trucks. That's all I got to say. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Getz?
He said 2650, what was the full address?
2650, you didn't.
Thank you, Mr. Getz. Can I call Andre Brower, please?
Chair, might I say something before we go to the next one? Please make sure, oh, you can come up, I just want to make sure everybody addresses their comments to the Planning Commission. Sometimes when you turn your head back and forth, the microphone can drop what you're saying, and we need to make sure we're catching everything for the record, so please make sure we're addressing the commission.
Thank you, Brian.
All right. Thank you, I'm a resident over on Shenango, a couple doors down from the entrance to the property business. So let me get fast, my name's Andre Brower. And the business that hasn't been there before, I moved there like in 2008, were very accommodating to the neighborhood, no issues at all. But now, since the new business has taken over, the traffic, like we talked about, was really bad. I have my kids, and it's just been, it's been really difficult for us to accept the new business. So we're really nervous about what's going to happen in the future with this property. A few things that I want to bring up, in general, we're just kind of concerned, all these things that we're addressing, like how to make it palatable for a neighborhood to exist, a lot of promises. I'm just concerned, if this passes, are these, how are we going to like make sure they do all these things that they say they're going to do? I wasn't sure, because in the past meetings I've been at, they said they're going to do all these various ways to accommodate. I saw a few things, but a lot of it hasn't been done, so it's just making me a little bit nervous. Once it's approved, how do they, the enforcement, how do we know they're not going to just do it all over again with the cars and with the loud noises and the, and the, all the things that are, that are disturbing the neighborhood? So I don't know if they're, if they're supposed to do all these things before today, or if it's just a future promise that someday they'll do it if they get approved. So I wanted to confirm some of the things that we saw. The entrance to the, the Shenango was gated, but there's still people going in and out, all day, all night. Even though either they have access or someone lets them in, sometimes the cars pile up, waiting to get in, there's a lot of activity that is just not appropriate for a neighborhood. We've seen, I, they must be workers, just walking up and down, kind of loitering in the area. And even my kids are being, they're talking to these people, I'm just concerned that this isn't appropriate for a neighborhood. And we do know that there has been like criminal activity in this property. And I know it's been addressed, we talked to the officials that have addressed it, and I guess they've cleaned it up, or they've been trying to monitor it more with stolen vehicles and things like that. But it just is, uh, making me concerned that this is maybe not the best use for this property, for this land. And, yeah, the large vehicles we did.
Thank you, Mr. Brower. Can I, can we please have Dave Hildebrand?
My name's Dave Hildebrand, I live at 2905 West Shenango, straight across the gate from Global Storage, right on Decatur. I've lived there for 25 years. I've seen this property go from a landscaping business that the property was totally covered with trees. They've gone in and cut down all of the trees. So now I get a look at a big old junkyard, and a woodcutting business, and along with all of their trucks and noise and traffic. They came along a few months back, put in a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign, right across from my house. First thing that happened was the two cars lined up at the 25 mile an hour speed limit sign, proceeded to zoom down Decatur as fast as they could. So it is a problem. And they're going to put up an eight-foot black fence right across the street from my view of their property. So it's going to look like I'm looking at a prison. So I'm kind of concerned about that. Yeah, the gate's an issue. People park outside that gate, they don't have the code to get in, so they just sit there and honk their horn until somebody shows up to let them in. Sunday night, there were four cop cars parked alongside of my house, some kind of a party, something going on. Cops are always over there, so it's a constant concern of what's going on over there. Cops are always over there, all the time. So that's my concerns.
Yeah, Brenda.
Do you think that closing off that gate on Decatur will alleviate some of the activity that?
As long as they do what they say, as long as they, they say, quote, "It's going to be for emergencies only", but if it just continues as it is now, nothing's going to change.
Any other questions?
I have, yeah, a quick question. You say that your house would be looking right at all of the fence and the screen and thing like, things like that. Would it be better when there's, if there was no screening, or what would be your preference? Is there a better way?
Yeah, as long as they're going to have like trees growing in front of that fence, so you can't see that prison, prison-looking fence. They did have trees growing behind it, so I couldn't see the property, but they cut them all down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hildebrand, we have another speaker signed up, Jude Brower. Hi Jude.
Hi. I was going to say some concerns I've had about.
Jude, I'm sorry, could you grab that microphone and just pull it towards your, there you go.
Like that, oh, I can hear myself. So I've had some concerns about, like, living next to a place where it's, like, not really comfortable, but when I see cars and trucks just zooming right by my house. And on Saturday night, a car was just like parked outside the fence for five minutes, honking its horn. And it was like really hard to do anything. When I was playing football with my brother and we just couldn't, it's just constant honk and honk and honk and, like, all the time. And cars just zooming by. And at night, we hear, we hear some strange sounds, that sounds like bangs, like, we don't know what's going on in there. And just safety that. My brother was approached by people, and they were just lingering. We assume they were workers, but we don't really know. So, and they were doing like our little, like, my brother's favorite thing, RC cars in our driveway, and that's just a concern, because they just talking with my brother, and we don't even know who they are. And they just, uh, the guidelines that were said in the last, in one of the meetings were not addressed. Yeah, like, there's part three of a, do you have, do you have the document? Sorry, sorry. The project overview said that the primary access to the entire property will continue to be from 27110 W Union Avenue entrance of our faculty. That has not happened. Or that the limits access in daytime hours, they have been trucks and cars entering constantly, constantly. So they have not addressed those topics.
Thank you, Jude, great job. Uh, any questions for Jude? Thank you for being here tonight, you did amazing, thank you. All right, one last call for anybody who has not signed up, to speak one way or another on this PUD from the public. Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant back up, we can ask clarifying questions, no additional testimony can be provided, and then we can also ask questions of staff for clarification, Brian?
Chair, we have the letter that was supposed to be in the packet, it was not included, but we made some copies of it. If you'd like, I can read it into the record and then hand it out to everyone.
Thank you.
So, dated November 12th, 2024, dear Mr. Sampson, hi, I am a 12-year-old kid at Littleton Academy, 7th grade. I'm writing this letter to inform you of the bad dealings with a company by my house. They have been acting up with bad deeds and have gone off free for a long time. There's already been criminal involvement with them, and they break the rules of our local police very often. They say they would not use our side of the street to run their cars through, but they do. They have major noise problems too. I believe this is long enough and think you should do something about this outrageous company's disrespect of the neighborhood. They've been involved in criminal activity and should at least shut off the connecting entry to our street. They've taken cars into the boundaries of their property and stored them there where they were not licensed to do this. They were eventually caught and told never to do that again. Now they take cars and align them up on the street to rot, and it blocks up the sidewalks. This was the first stage of the disregard for the boundaries of our neighborhood. This company is not safe in our neighborhood. The next problem they have is noise complications. Company there loves making obnoxious noise when it is not needed. They have huge cars that drive down our street, the street they said they wouldn't use, and they make loud noises. These huge cars come around, come at around 6:00 in the morning, when they can only have sound in their business hours, which are around 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. One time a car was in the vicinity, when the gate closed, it decided to smash through the gate to get out. This created loud beeping at 5:00 in the morning, I couldn't sleep, and I had school the next day. The noise from that place is unbearable, and even on a street, they shouldn't use it. This company has no respect for the community we have in our neighborhood, they destroy the setting we're in.
Thank you, can you give us the address of that? Resident?
Do what now?
Was the address listed on that letter?
Uh, it's not on the letter, it was on the envelope, but it was written by a minor, so we wanted to make sure to not include any of that information.
Thank you. All right, questions from the commission to the applicant?
Why is the gate that is apparently on your property not being used as much as?
That is from, so that property was sold to AGS Construction back in 2015. That is, was a separate property from the storage facility. We actually purchased the property from AGS Construction back in 2019? 2019, 2020, 2020? And that's when we combined the property back into Global Storage.
Does it not currently, can you not drive through it?
It's not connected to the storage facility.
Got it.
It's the former construction facility, which now we have leased out to another tenant that unfortunately went out of business.
And it abuts, but it's not connected because there's a fence? Is that right?
There's no driveline between.
2690 West Union Avenue?
Yeah, there's no driveline that connects those two properties without some major reconfiguration, and then because the outbuilding's on 2690, there's not a conducive way to drive through that property from the storage facility. There's never intended to be a through, a throughway, because it was bought as a separate property.
I see there's some outbuildings there, there's a narrow paved area between there. Have you ever looked at making that your primary ingress and egress?
Have not looked at that being a primary egress. There's a large curb that exists between those two buildings for drainage. So it would not be a, it's, I mean, it's like a, would not be, I mean, it's not wide enough for two trucks to pass between those two buildings. As well as it's not connected into the stor-, we'd have to take out sections of the storage facility as well.
From just the satellite imagery I'm looking at right now, it does look like this is sort of a, some of the uses of this space are junkyard, like, you know, just.
Some is, some is car storage, some is contractor storage, trailers and so forth.
Okay, can you just describe to me a little bit about those folks who use it as car storage? And a lot of these look smashed and like typically a junk, what, what happens? Like, what is their, what are these folks doing with these cars? Are they just?
A lot of these guys have shops down off the Union Avenue, and they don't have places down in that facility to have extra cars. So they store them in our facility, then they come down and get them and take them over to their shops to repair them.
Okay, the imagery I'm looking at looks like cars are piled on top of, these are not cars being repaired. Is this still a typical use?
Uh, we do not generally, we do not allow them to stack cars on top of cars now. And when they do, we try to rearrange them.
Okay. Other questions? Brenda?
Are you able to close the Shenango Avenue entrance today? Did you do it like tomorrow?
Our firewood business that currently operates on that property, that's how they access the property?
You, I mean, I mean off Decatur, off Decatur, they can't close, they can't enter from Union?
That would require the firewood guys to drive all the way through the business, that's never how they've done it. So I don't see that's a a viable direction to get them through the property.
But you will do it once this PUD goes through?
Eventually, we will not, when the PUD goes through, we will not be doing firewood anymore.
Oh, okay.
Can you say that again? When the, if the PUD goes through?
When we build out the additional storage, we will stop the firewood facility.
Got it.
It, maybe this is a question for Brian, so say the PUD does get approved by council, what is the requirements, because you kind of noted before, they would never have to do any improvements. What is the, when do the requirements get set that they have to close that or have to do any of the other improvements?
We might have to defer that to Public Works, since it's a comment out of their study. Normally, so if we have a project for, we'll say, an apartment complex, we generally tie everything to the first CO. But if it's a business that doesn't have to build any buildings, yeah, we might need to reach out to Public Works to see when that would be triggered.
I assume it would be triggered at the permit for the fence, because I had that permit submitted, but I didn't get approved because of the PUD in process.
What's that now?
I have a permit for the new fence going down Decatur, but that was on hold because of the PUD process. So I assume this would be part of that.
For the fence permit?
Yes.
Are you saying Public Works would not allow you to put the fence in until you closed off that entrance?
No, they wouldn't let me do the fence in until I had the PUD put in, because I wanted to put an eight-foot fence in.
But that fence would close off that entrance?
At that time, we would close off that entrance, yes.
Oh, okay, that's.
That's what you're asking, yes. That is our anticipation.
So the intent is, if this goes through, the entire fence goes all the way, and then the, in the interim, the fire facility would have, the firewood facility would have to go through the, the rest of the site to get access?
We would have a fire gate down there for fire access if they need it.
I'm sorry, the firewood facility that is currently?
The firewood facility would stop, the firewood facility at that time, it'd be, we would anticipate.
Would no longer be.
Timing-wise, this is anticipated to be approved sometime in June, and we would stop the firewood business at that time. Kind of a slow time for firewood. No, no.
So one of the requirements that the city's recommending is around the ADA compliance from that access off of Union?
Yes.
Can you speak to what changes you anticipate you would need to make? Because it sounds like that right-of-way is particularly a point of contention. Does the anticipated changes there, would you anticipate that they would improve the situation with the neighbors?
We intend to approve it, we intend to.
We intend to um widen it toward the um at least for the inbound turning radius into the global store or into the A G S properties. Piece there on the west side of uh entry. So to widen the property that widen the entrance that way. Um, we're also changing the pitch on the sidewalk because that's not ADA compliant today. It's too big of a dip.
Okay, but the anticipated changes are only at that entrance from Union?
About fifty feet up.
Okay, thank you.
We we would take the time to address the grading issue at the front because there's a kind of a hump right there. So we take the hump out.
That work is is strictly in the public right of way. It's not on the easement. Is that correct?
Uh, it would be if we go back to fifty feet onto the easement, it would, yes.
Go back fifty feet, okay.
And that's to flatten the entrance, so it makes it more accessible.
There was a significant amount of trees along Decatur. What was the intent of removing all of this?
Uh, the one, most of the ones that were taken out were owned by the landscaping company. And so they finally came along and they had a right to take those for the next for three years from when we purchased property.
Other questions, commissioners?
The folk, the neighbors that, you know, spoke about the noise complaints, obviously, that has nothing to do with whether or not the property gets expanded. That's currently an issue. How do you plan to address that with your tenants?
So we do. Um, that is the onsite manager. One of his jobs is to address noise on the property. If there is not noise after hours, they're not allowed to. So he'd go out and address it. Um, I'm not aware of the reference to the banging and so forth. So I'll be talking to him about that. I mean, I mean, as part of the process of going through the neighborhood meetings, and one of the things I said we did is put up a sign at the end of our property at the Shenango and or Decatur entry to tell people to go right, to go down to cater to try to eliminate people driving through the neighborhood. We also installed a gate halfway through the property to keep people from um traversing from the east side of the property to the west side of the property to go out that direction to try to limit to to cut down on the traffic. And as Bush said, he noticed a significant decrease since that time.
How would you propose that you convince people to stop laying on their horn because they can't get in the fence?
Well, there won't be a way to get in that way, so that should fix that.
Do does your company have written policies or procedures to deal with um hazardous material leaks on your property?
Yes.
Anybody else? Amy?
You have a question about leases and is it like they lease the space?
Yes.
So in your leases, do you have?
We have an acceptable use policy that's inside the lease. Is that what you're?
Say that again?
Oh, it's your question. I apologize. I mean, talk career.
Um, well, I'm just, I'm thinking back to the amount of um lease in the neighborhood regarding this. If somebody if it's a abuser of the space who is having the police called on them a number of times over and over, is there?
We would. We would evict them.
You, okay.
So we do work a lot. I mean, we do work with City of Inglewood and and the Police Department, and I I speak to the sheriff's on a regular basis to make sure they they know we have full their our full cooperation. So I would get compliments from from them on a regular basis about the quality of the yard.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a staff question.
Do you want to check? Sorry. Do you want to check in with Steven?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh, Steve. Any questions?
No, I'm good. I'm listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Uh, yeah, but the questions for Brian. What about the comp plan as exists today? Because that is what we have to make our decision on. And I've been going through my materials that have been prevented. I can't find it. Um, what is this area? I consistent within the comp plan as it is today, please?
I don't know what your question is, Brian. I quite understand which question it was.
Yeah, it's it's about the city's comprehensive plan and any um specific details uh of of what the city wants to see happen in this in this area. And there's a current comp plan, and we're in the process of updating the comp plan as well.
So on the um Centennial Park Area Neighborhood Map, if that's what you're inquiring about, this specific location, including the neighborhood to the north, um, on that cul-de-sac is listed as a residential transition area. Um, and the potential for a future live-work housing style development.
As it existed and not after?
That's how it's listed in the comp plan that was adopted in twenty seventeen.
I'm sorry, Brenda. Could you re-ask your question? Your mic buzzed on.
I just wanted to make sure that the that was from twenty seventeen, and he confirmed that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? We can go to discussion. We close the public hearing? Uh, we'll need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Hagerty?
A quick question on that. That means that we can't talk to anybody again. Just want to make sure all the commissioners are.
Yeah, when we close this public hearing, we don't ask any more questions of staff, of the applicant, or of the public.
We're good?
Yep.
Do you want to do your findings now or after discussion?
I think the findings.
You'll do your I just will do your findings when you vote on the motion to recommend, correct? Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hagerty?
Hi.
Ms. Austin?
Yes.
Mr. Ruddle?
Aye.
Mr. Adams?
Aye.
Ms. Hubka?
Aye.
Mr. Renson?
Yes.
Mr. Kaplan?
Aye.
Ms. Cicero?
Aye.
And Chair Martinez?
Aye.
Hearing is closed.
All right, um, so um get a we we need a motion to approve and then discuss? Yeah.
Correct, Vicky. They do the motion and then discuss, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to discuss to to approve. Okay, make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry. I don't mean to be a stickler, but motion to recommend approval to City Council?
Thank you. Motion to make a recommendation to City Council for approval and approve it.
And are there any?
Or not.
And I'm sorry.
May may as you just add with the requirements included by staff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. That's where I was going. Thank you, Vicky. Okay, so with the conditions in the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, does everyone, before we do a second, did everyone understand that?
We will. We have the ability to add additional conditions? Or that would have?
That would be an amendment after your discussion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So I have a motion from Ms. Hubka, a second?
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, discussion.
That, I mean, here's the thing, the the access through Shenango, it needs to be closed. And if this is the way that this happens, um, I feel like that's the best possible opportunity. I also think the access needs to come off Union through their own property would be my recommendation um in some way, shape or form. I'm a little disappointed that all the trees are gone, but it sounds like that was another, you know, not necessarily out of their control, but I want to make sure that that buffer also is sufficient on that west side.
Yeah, that just to speak to that access easement, that's a legal agreement between two private property owners that we have no purview over. Yeah, just want to make that clear.
Do we? Can we put anything saying they have to add? Well, like just that they have to access the site in a legal way?
Include things in our recommendation, but only what's legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Get in the man. That the option that they have too is to not do anything with this property and to leave it as is. And it sounds like it's problematic. It's definitely problematic with that entrance coming off Shenango, and it sounds like it's not the kind of traffic and people you want going in and out of that neighborhood. So that is one option is to not do anything, and they could completely. They can legally keep going like this. So the other alternative is we tell them no, and um maybe they'll sell it to a developer who will come back to us and ask to put in um a large scale multi-tenant apartment building. And I'll be honest with you, that is where the comprehensive plan is consistent. The comprehensive plan calls for moving this to a residential area. Um, so that is problematic in making this decision, by the way, is that there was there has been an intention with the city for a number of years now to move this towards residential. But here we have somebody who is a private business person who owns the property and supports small business and has said, and I agree with you all that that you're worried that they're not going to come through with these improvements, but yet nonetheless, they're offering to put the trees back and to shut that entrance off. Um, the other applicable standards is um we have to make a decision based on law, and it's something that our attorney has provided to us. Uh, and one of them I just mentioned, it has to be consistent with the comp plan. The application is or is not in conformance with development standards, law or the ordinance. And the third one is the application is or is not substantially consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the city. So that tells you how I'm gonna vote probably.
I thought Noah brought up a good question that maybe we want to dig into a little more internally on how the tax base happens. It sounded like you might know a little bit about that. Oh, no, okay, darn, should have asked that question. So but it's not a business use tax. It's just a um property tax. Okay. Noah?
I mean, it was noteworthy to me that there were so many um comments against approval. Um, it I I I understand that the easement question uh is outside of the the purview of you know, this particular approval. I still heard some indications that the use as it is right now is potentially not conducive to being as close as it is to the residential neighborhood. And so expanding what is essentially, it sounds like, an absentee business uh where the owner, you know, rents these spaces and then people do with them as they will with a a single manager responsible for um the activity on the site. It it doesn't sound like it's working um for the neighborhood. So uh I uh am definitely hesitant to recommend approval of adding additional acreage of that same use case um that would potentially exacerbate the problems that were brought to our attention.
Agree, and I think between Brenda's comments and your comments just now, I'm feeling the same way that the existing use is creating a nuisance for the neighborhood. And the question that I'm trying to frame this for myself is will the conditions contained within this P U D that are required, the fence and the um improvements to the right of way um in closing off Shenango? Will those conditions mitigate an expanded use that is going that brings similar nuisance? The one thing that I'm really concerned about, too, is a lot of the activity inside the site is internal. The public doesn't see it. We're relying on maybe a single security or site manager or whatever um to really know if there's hazardous material spills, if there's um, you know. I just worry about the the transparency of what could be further nuisance um activity inside of the site. Those are my thoughts at the moment. Anybody else? Let's go from the down here. Anybody?
Michelle? Yeah. Um, I share those concerns. But my problem is I'm trying to balance that with basically all of the concerns of that I've heard from the neighborhood. Is fencing this in and making it somewhat managed rather than sort of the wild, wild west that's going on now? Um, is that better um for the neighborhood? And obviously, it's better for the applicants. Um, and I think that I'm leaning towards a yes, because I think that if the if the applicant comes through and does what their intent and what their drawings and everything indicate that as much as an ugly fence with and but it does include trees in front of it and things like that. So that's part of the plan. And I would like to highlight that we make sure that that landscaping plan is definitely followed. While not desirable, it's better than things not being fenced in and, you know, this sort of, like I said, the wild, wild west, people wandering around and cars parking and, you know, it just looks like mayhem over there right now. So those are kind of my thoughts.
Um, I think I am also struggling with the expansion of a use that feels somewhat problematic according to the neighbors. Um, I don't live down there, so I can't speak to it, but I feel like if I did live down there, um I would be somewhat against reducing the potential for a mixed-use scale housing, or not mixed-use, excuse me, mid-density housing. Um, because we're struggling with that in Inglewood right now. Um, and taking over land that is, you know, currently zoned for it feels counterproductive in that regard. I also work in connection with construction industry, so I get it, small businesses, they need to store stuff. But um, I, you know, I struggle because it's it's kind of competing needs, to be honest.
Can I make a further comment? I I agree with with your comments, too. And I think if I had my druthers, I'd rather see this, you know, a proposal from a single family builder to, you know, build this out, but that's not what's before us. Um, and so that's why I I like I said, I think that it would be great that well, what what is being planned is not very capital intensive, that there's not a lot of concrete and things like that, so that if we if we could get to further down with the like the Inglewood plan, that it becomes residential, it would be pretty fairly easy. There wouldn't be that much impediment to building that. And of course, that would be, I think, all of ours end goal. So I just wanted to make sure that I've acknowledged what you were saying, and that's true, too.
Yeah, I think my concern would be if it gets rezoned, then you're creating another hurdle for someone to go backwards. And um I mean, you know, the the purchase of this property, it was already zoned. The developer and owner who decides to purchase property is taking a huge risk. That's not really our problem. So I think we need to keep in mind that, you know, someone's looking at this as an opportunity for their business to expand. I know that it's not ideal if, you know, it doesn't go their way, but it's a risk that um developers take on. And so
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if there were this were to be built out as medium density, there would be some zoning that would have to at at least partial reconfiguration. And I mean, the developer would have work to do regardless. Other thoughts? We want to talk about anything else that uh can help us come to a your or each of us come to our own conclusion?
I'm gonna go back to the criminal activity that concerned me, and if it's enclosed, is it just criminal activity that gets bigger because it can't be seen?
Yeah, I I gotta tell you, and I really appreciate all of the public input about the cars and the noise. My perspective right now is that this P U D at least addresses some of that by closing down that Shenango entrance. The easement on the north side has to be dealt with separately anyway. It's either more of the same or at least some potential to to contain it. Any other thoughts?
Do we? Is there anything that we want to add to the conditions? We have the conditions from the city?
We can make additional, uh, yeah.
Any thoughts there?
Amendments to that motion. Anybody have anything that they'd like to? Anybody have anything that they'd like to discuss on adding? Changing? All right, well, if there's no further discussion, then we should, we should vote on the motion as, as presented.
Okay, Mr. Hagerty?
Because of the need in my, from what I understand from the public of closing off the access off Decatur at Shinango, I am going to vote for a yes on approval here. To recommendation, thank you, for approval and recommendation to City Council for approval because of that benefit to, to the neighborhood.
Okay. Ms. Austin, how do you vote?
Yes, I'm going to vote yes as well. I, I think I've expressed what, of course, I think everybody's wishes would be, including mine. But I am very concerned about the criminal activity that's going on there now. And I think having this built out, basically being more of the same on, it's going on, on the east side there, what they're doing over there with this company. So I would vote yes.
Mr. Ruddle? How do you vote?
Yes, I would vote yes and second everybody's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Adams?
Uh, yes, and I, I agree with that.
Ms. Hub, I'm sorry. Okay, Ms. Hubka?
Yes.
Mr. Renson?
I think the comp plan is still front of mind, so I'll vote no.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm still concerned about the comp plan and I, I haven't seen demonstration that growing this is going to get better. So I vote no.
You vote no? Okay, sorry. Mr. Kaplan? Ms. Cicero?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, and Chair Martinez?
What's our count? Can I ask that? No, I, no, I'm voting on my own volition here. I, I think that getting a closure of that entrance on Shinango is beneficial, I think ultimately, and this is not something I would normally say, but as demand is going to increase for housing, as highest and best use is determined by the market, will eventually shift the direction of, of land use, especially in this area. I don't love it, but I'm going to vote yes.
Okay, motion passes six to three. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commission. Let me get my agenda back up. Staff's choice?
I don't have anything.
Attorney's choice?
I don't have anything either, thank you.
And Commissioners, let's go down the line. Let's start on this side with Amy. Anything you want to discuss, topics to bring up, not related to what we've already discussed this evening?
No, thanks.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me.
I'm good, thank you.
No.
I didn't have anything until I happened across an article. There's something going on with the city center that I saw that there's, there's an article in the, in the paper and then, probably in the Business Journal about it. Out here?
The discussion from the study session last night and the developer.
Did you see the article in the paper?
I saw that there was an article in the Denver Business Journal.
Okay, was, yeah.
I was not able to read it, but yeah.
I am not aware of any article. There was a study session last night where the new master developers came and talked to council. So I don't know if that's what it's in.
It was probably follow-up to that.
But you might, you might watch that study session from last night.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to say congratulations. That's a move forward at least. There's something good to be happy about.
I, I, I think every step is a small step in the right direction.
Thanks, that's all.
Uh, where are we at? Oh, Carl, anything from Commissioner's Choice?
Nothing here.
All right, then with that, we adjourn. Thank you, everybody.